Welcome home. We are W N S T A of 1570 Towson Baltimore and Baltimore Positive. We are positively here at beautiful Faedley's. It is the new Faedley's in the new Lexington Market. I have Pac-Man scratch off from the Maryland Lottery giving these away here all afternoon. Our friends at Liberty Pure Solutions keeping our water clean as well as Jiffy Lube Multi-Care putting us on the road. We are going to be at Greenmount Station, Greenmount Bowl on the 24th talking about horse racing and the horse racing industry. And on the 26th back here in this spot, I think Thoreau Vigorajah is going to be here. Sheila Dixon is going to be joining us a little later on, but we have city council. We have council manic districts. I had Zach Blanchard on last week, chasing Eric Costello around, Fleech Porter, a bunch of people. But there is a big election and Shannon Snead is here. She's going to tell you, Shannon, when is that big election? Let everybody know, let's do election duty here first.
May 14th is the actual election day. Early voting is May 2nd through May 9th. So early voting, you know, the polls stay open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at night.
I've become a mail-in-er. I, I, you know, well, I'm old and my mother, my mother was, my mother was in her 98 when she died. So I always voted with my mother because I had to take her to vote because she was getting older, right? So I always voted in person because she voted in person. She died in 17 and then by the time we got to 20 and we had plague going on and we moved the election, I came this close to running for mayor in that election and I just decided, Moeller talked me into it. He's like, fill out the form, get the thing. And I have pictures of me mailing the ballot down at campus. But I lived in the city the last election, so now I'm out in the county.
Oh, are you?
I cannot vote for you. So I have.
I'm glad to know that you could have voted for me. Ha, 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 ha.
Well, this is your chance to convince me along with all the rest. Shannon Snead is a candidate for city council president. She's run before, I kidded you about when the TV thing was on here. I'm like, you've been on television before and I like know of you from the television industry, but you were never the reporter person. You were the producer person.
Producer person. I was a writer, started my career off on the assignment desk and worked my way up to producing.
At?
I started my career, Fox 45 was the first television station to hire me right out of college. And then I went to W J Z for the rest of my television career.
What?
So I was there over 10 years.
I've had you on a couple of times and I know you've run before and like Thoreau keeps running and when he comes a couple of weeks. And like, I wasn't going to be that guy from a city, like I was going to sign up and say, it's a military assignment for four years for me. Cause I have a gig. I have a life, right? And I didn't want to be a politician. I don't think you went into television thinking you, this was where you were going to go.
No.
And I certainly at 51, considering running, not winning, I probably wouldn't have won, but that's one of the reasons I didn't run. But there's an ambition about all of you who run and a deep respect I have for any of you who are sitting yourself out here to do this and to try to make our city better. I'm here doing this right now, trying to make the city better. You're in a different place.
And so that's, but I started because I wanted to get into broadcast because I wanted to tell the stories of people. I was like, I want to write. I want to let people know what's going on. And so the good, the bad and the ugly. My dream job was going to be a news director. That's what I was working my way up to. Listen, I went to the University of Maryland Eastern Shore, minor in broadcast communications. They didn't have it there. It was English. That's why you had to have a concentration.
But you never wanted to be on air.
I never wanted to be, well, I started off, I probably did, but I wanted, once I found out, you know, behind the scenes, absolutely. I was like, the power is in being the news director. That is like to really decide on, because I've seen the news director say, no, not, not that story. Or a general manager say, no, 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 no. What about this? And so I early, I found out like, that's what I want to do. I want to be the news director. I want to be able to hire people. I want to make sure that we hire diverse group of people.
Leadership.
Yes. And so I was just doing my thing and working in my community. I was in East Baltimore cleaning up, planting trees. I tell the story all the time how when I moved on my block in East Baltimore, there was one tree.
What, where, where do you live in East Baltimore?
So no, I moved, I've since moved. I live in Reservoir Hill now. And so, but I lived in East Baltimore, not too far from Patterson Park, right on Fayette Street between Elwood and Potomac is where I live.
All right. Butcher Shield area kind of sort of north of the park.
Yeah. Elwood Park. Yeah. Closer to McAldeary Park, Elwood Park is where we live. So no, I was just working in my community, minding my business and, you know, volunteering at Banner Neighborhoods, being on a green team in the community. So we planting trees and flowers.
While you're working at the, at the.
Why are we working at the television station? Yeah. Just doing everything my community said do, go to school, get a good education, come back to the community and give back. And so I was doing all those things. And then some ladies in the community said, you're showing up, you're doing all this stuff. You are amazing. We want you to run for city council president. I mean, I want, we want you to run for city council. And I was like, absolutely not. W J Z has not.
Do I look like a politician?
Right. W J Z has not been laying on a paycheck. No, thank you. We'll just keep, you know, doing what we're doing.
When you resist that you've considered this?
This was 2000 and probably 10 when they said something about it.
Before Trump came along and like, okay.
Oh gosh, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay.
And 2011, I think we had the election and I was complaining about the councilman at the time in our district. And so, and they were like, seriously, think about this and said, no. Before Delegate Robin Lewis became Delegate Robin Lewis, she sat me down, had a conversation with me and said, Shannon, you really need to seriously think about this. And I'm still like, no. But then my husband, I was complaining one day and my husband got tired of me complaining, I guess. Cause he said, are you going to keep complaining about it or are you going to do something about this? And I was like, you know what? I am going to do some. Where I was like, I am going to do something about it. That's essentially.
My wife thought I was kind of crazy when I was going to run for mayor, but she saw the problems in the city. I lived at Harbor Court for 19 years, right? So I lived in the 23rd floor. And you know, when you go downstairs in any direction you'd walk, whether it's Ballpark, South Baltimore, up north toward the Royal Farms, through the harbor, over to the east, wherever. I lived downtown 19 years, so I saw changes. You know what I mean? And in seeing the changes, I wanted to act. That's what this is. I mean, your guys like, hey, you were a sports guy. Yeah, it sort of was until like the baseball team sucked for 25 years and emptied out downtown. And then I had to fight with the billionaire that owned the team, right? To try to, well, you, you've been here a long time. You know what vibrant downtown looked like, a vibrant sports community. And it's coming back a little bit. And a lot of, I think a lot of things in our city are coming back. Would you agree with that?
Oh my goodness. I'm happy about with the sports team, what we did. Listen, don't put me on the field. I will, I will not be the guy to get you down.
You're not a sports person.
I am not the sports person, but I love cheering the teams on. And so.
Well, we just gave them 1.2 billion dollars.
Listen, but can we win? We just need to win. I would, I would like to have a Super Bowl here. Like we were so close.
But I think the bigger picture is what it does for the community, for business and supporting local business. That's. The reason we gave all this money was to make sure we have 30,000 people down here tonight instead of 10.
Yes. And that's the thing. I'm like, people kept saying, oh, people are not going to come into the city. And that proved, yes, people will come into the city.
Sure they will.
People will eat in our city. Yes, people will book hotels, hotel rooms in our city. And I'm like, so stop talking bad about Baltimore City because people are going to come and we want them to come and we're going to encourage them to come. It's good to see when we see our policemen and women out to help direct traffic and to move it along. Like those are all good signs that definitely Baltimore is coming back.
All right. So Shannon Snead for Baltimore City Council President, running because she's fed up, good reason, and wants to build a better Baltimore, another great reason. Your first thing is honesty. When I look here, and this is a, I have a 25th anniversary documentary coming out two weeks from now. And one of the issues I've had with the sports teams is transparency when they're taking 600 million dollars of public money as a private entity. But then being honest, right? And honesty in Baltimore politics, it's like a punchline, right? And I'm going to have Sheila here in a little while. She's running. We're going to talk to her about past, present, future, all of that. But you used honesty as like a first word. I think everything.
On purpose.
Obviously on purpose. What, what are you fed up about?
So here's the thing, public safety I was fed up about. Look, I'm, I'm glad the numbers are going down. We saw that. But the bottom line is people still don't feel safe. People feel, people are still moving in our communities. Like I need to get home before dark. Oh, I'm not going down there. And I'm like, no, we want you to go to that neighborhood. You should be okay staying out after dark. You should be able to sit on your porch. Fed up about that. Education, we hear it, we see it. My daughter's in Baltimore City Public School. It is personal to me. I want our schools to thrive. I want us to be successful. And people are not going to be willing to move into our communities if they don't feel safe. They're not going to be willing to buy a house or rent something here. If the schools aren't good, we're not going to keep them. And then if you hear all this stuff going on in city government, the pay to play, politicians not being honest, people just looking out for themselves. We will not gain the population that we need to gain here. And so one of the first things that I want people to know about me is that I'm someone that you can trust. I have a track record. I even go back and say, listen, Tom Perez picked me as his lieutenant governor candidate. He had to go through.
That's the last time I saw you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Tom came and had a crab cake with us one day. I think I had you on Zoom.
Yes.
Cause we were in that really weird spot. What did you learn running?
Oh my goodness, that Tom is such a numbers guy. And so it would just be good to sit next to him and see him run the numbers in his brain and put it on paper. What I learned is that the state is so much bigger than what we like imagine when we look at maps, right? I went to school at the University of Maryland Eastern Shore. So of course I was familiar with the Eastern Shore. But when you're talking about going to Cumberland, Maryland, when you're talking about meeting with a democratic club that probably only has like five people, you really get to see how people are living, what's going on and have those conversations. And what I learned is we're not much different from the folks in Princess Anne and the folks in Baltimore City. We're not much different from the folks in Baltimore County and the folks in Baltimore City that we all went good schools. We all want amenities in our communities. We all want our politicians to work for us. And so that's another thing. I'm going to segue. And that's what made me do public financing because the same old folks running for office, doing the same.
There's a lot of talk about that, about, about when I went to run five, six years ago, everybody says you can't win. A, I'm white. Let's, they think I'm white. I'm actually Hispanic. But you don't have any money. You don't have the money. And I said, I ask people for money all, I mean, I'm, I have sponsors, Maryland Lottery, whatever. I'm going to go and ask businesses to give me money to give the J Z to run ads, basically. It, you're asking for money to give to media companies primarily, primarily. And I thought, and they said, well, you can't win because you don't have any money. And I thought, well, that, that, that shouldn't be, shouldn't be the reason.
Exactly. Exactly. And so I'm like, listen, I am doing public financing because I am sick, I'm sick of the pay to play that happens in Baltimore City. I was on the council. I was a fierce advocate to increase the minimum wage at the time. We got a lot of support from it, but then it was time for us to get elected, get into office. And all the business people came across and said, no, 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 this will be horrible for Baltimore City. And the other special interests, like you can't do this. And so we put money in your pockets. We helped you with your campaign. And the bill got vetoed and we did so much work. We were like working hard for this bill. And that let me see the firsthand, that's pay to play. Just because you donated to my campaign means that I shouldn't sponsor good bills? I shouldn't put in good policies? That just doesn't make any sense. And so with public financing, the most that one can give is $150 and you are not getting any money from any businesses, special interests, unions, none of the above. It all comes from individual people. And so it's just knocks out all the sense of, I gave you $6,000. I gave my wife $6,000 to give to you and my son. It stops it all.
I've been in the air 32 years and I've had sponsors give me money and, and my sales guy would say, you're not buying the editorial. Your sponsorship will not decide what Nestor says about the Orioles or the Ravens, or the city, or Donald Trump, or anyone else. So that's sort of the first rule of me doing that is you're not going to buy my opinion.
Yep. And we should not. I mean, like, and you, what world are we living in where we don't want people to have their own opinions? What world are we living in when we don't want to put in good policies that will help out everyone? And that's why all my policies, policies have been good. I put in more policies than my opponents have. Listen, I'm the one who said the commissioner, the police commissioner has to live in Baltimore City. That was my bill that I put in that I got across the finish line. And so you've heard the police commissioner say, I gotta find a place in Baltimore City. Yep. I put in that bill. Thank you, sir. I'm glad you're looking for a place in Baltimore City. The other bill that I put in to make sure that the mayor cabinet members live in Baltimore City. I feel like y'all address that pothole that's out there quicker if you are actually walking and living in our communities. First is coming in from 83 and coming in from 95.
I had a nasty one today on the way over. I did. I had a really bad one.
And I'm like, it makes a difference.
Yeah, it was a really bad one.
It makes a difference when you are living here and you're seeing it. It's just not, I'll deal with them during the week. But when you have to send your kids to those public schools, when you have to walk our communities and listen and ride the bus in our communities, you'll do something about it. Having contract workers, the city thought they were going to save a dollar by having so many contract workers and security and janitorial services. We stopped that. You, each contract that came in, you're firing people? That doesn't even make good business sense. And I'm not trying to tell a business what to do, but what I am trying to do is make sure that we have good policies and good procedures to take care of the folks that are living here, that are working here. And so I put in a bill that said, give them 90 days. Most people fire themselves. Try not coming to work. Try not doing a good job. What's going to happen? You won't keep the job. I don't know of any job that you keep if you're not doing a good job.
That's fact. Shannon Snead is here. She's running for city council president. We're at Faedley's, doing the Lexington Market thing and the new market. Being fed up with things. So I left the city two years and two months ago, not because I was fed up at all. I mean, like literally, we lived in a building that didn't have outdoor space. My wife wanted a garden, right? Wanted to move, and we looked everywhere to move. We wound up moving to the county, but we looked at Howard County. We looked at 20 places in the city. We weren't, we were committed to a place we enjoyed, not the city or the county. And people kept saying like, you left the city. I'm standing in the city right now. I'll be here tomorrow. I'm going to the game Sunday. I'm in the city four or five days a week.
Well, that's good. We'll take it.
So I haven't in any way abandoned this. I'm sitting here talking to you about making the city better. I didn't look at it as like a, I gotta stay in the city and put my, I mean, I lost a quarter million dollars selling my place. I had a place 20 years. I sold it for less than I bought it for, like on the 23rd floor overlooking the city. Because it's been, it's been tough. To your point, do people want to live here? They want to send their kids to school here? The crime issues, the corruption issues, which we're always tackling. For you in doing this, changes that you want to make, you mentioned a couple of bills you've sponsored. As city council president, where does that, and I think a lot of people in the county don't understand this, or the power of the mayor being pretty special in Baltimore from a vote standpoint, right? More powerful than a lot of mayors from a vote standpoint.
Especially for, when you talk about the board of estimates, like the city council president oversees the board of estimates. And so, and the mayor has all the power in the board of estimates. I'm like, that was one of the changes that we voted for that we wanted to see. Does the mayor really need to have the DPW and the city solicitor? We, we don't need that, those two roles.
Things back to like Mayor Schaefer, right? These were power plays set up years ago that has made the mayor position extremely powerful.
But we've since voted for that and people were, we don't need it. We don't need it. And how helpful is it? I feel like we should be going to, the board of estimates, we want to help businesses here. Let's go through the list and find out. How many local businesses are we supporting that fix elevators? How many minority and business owned businesses do we have cleaning windows here? Like, let's pull, let's pull the list. How, how many people are we paying on time so they can stay open? You know, we know that's a problem. Those are things that we can essentially make better as the next city council president, that we know that we can do. I don't think we need extra votes on our board of estimates. I'm, I'm just going to say that.
For you with running for this and deciding to get in the race and a path to victory and public financing, what are, what are the things you're most upset about? What do you want to change? And how do we change crime and how do we make schools better?
Education. Education is the number one issue. I feel like it touches public safety on every aspect. You talk about students just being in the seats. If we can get our students to the classrooms, no matter what, I don't care if you didn't take a bath the night before. I don't care if your clothes are dirty. We can wash those. A lot of the schools have that. And so we need to make sure that our students get to school. That's the number one thing, because we have a lot of students that are absent. We also need to make sure that we increase our parental engagement. I've been saying over and over again, let's increase about 20%. Let's work on that. And people, well, how are you going to do that? Well, one, we have to engage our parents. It's not a them versus us. One, we can do this by just engagement. One, by having parent teacher conferences between the hours of maybe three and I don't know, seven o'clock versus three and five o'clock. Most parents don't get off of work until five o'clock and most of our households are headed by just one person. And so that means they need to go to work and make as much money as they can that day. And then when they get off of work, have a conference or maybe we can talk on the phone. Shoot, we just said, we've been meeting over Zoom.
I know you through Zoom.
And so you all can have conversations that way as teachers and, and parents. That just doesn't happen. And we should be thinking outside the box. We know all the students who are not going to school right now. We know each and every one of them. Hey, if our kids are not going to school, we need to work with parents because they immediately need to go to some type of trade. That way we're getting them off the streets early on. That means that you at least can, at least you can take care of yourself. Because now you've become a plumber, an electrician, have that, you can do something because we know who the students are. All I'm asking is that we think outside the box and we use it as an education first piece and then that will tackle the crime. My hope, as I told a police officer, is that our kids never get to see you outside of being at a community meeting or maybe being at a fun thing where you attend, but I don't want to see.
But there's a real relationship problem in the city though.
It is. That's one of the bills that I passed. I was the one who worked on.
Literally trust.
Trust, but I was the one that worked on making sure that victims of police brutality could speak out. The city solicitor at the time said, Shannon, that's not a good bill. I said, it's a great bill because the, the more that we keep silent on this stuff, the more that stuff will keep happening. I lived in East Baltimore. I seen the jump out boys. We happened and it happens in West Baltimore as well. And people didn't know what we were talking about.
What's a jump out boy?
Oh my gosh. When police officers used to jump out the car and tackle somebody. It happened all the time. They thought Freddie Gray was something new that, no, 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 no. This is not new. This is something that's always happened in our communities that people did not know about. But we knew because we were sitting on a staff and then we're playing.
I didn't know about rough rides in the backseat of a, of a police vehicle until, until we, we had a dead victim, right? Like rough rides. What the hell's a rough ride? How's, where's that in the police code? You know, I, I tried to figure that part of it out, but I haven't been in the backseat of a cruiser lately. So.
Me either, but we all, in my community, we've heard the stories. And so it is not new. And so that's what I'm saying. We have to speak up about these things because if we don't, they will continuously go on. And what we want to do is break the cycle of bad things happening in our communities, in our homes, at our jobs. We gotta say something. We gotta speak out. And so that's another part of the frustration, transparency and honesty on both ends. It's, it's not just something I'm saying, it's something that I live by. And so I'm like, we want to have hearings in Baltimore City. We don't want things to come out through the media first. And that's where a lot of our news comes out. It comes out in the media. It should be coming out during our hearings. We should know about certain things. Why don't we know that the reason we didn't have recycling pickup is because we didn't have GPS system on our truck? And we found out about it right before election time? Like that's crazy. That's something that we should be having a hearing about. Tell us what's going on, agency head. Tell us what you need. Why isn't this happening? We, I, I feel like I have more recycling than I have trash.
I left the city two years ago when all this was sort of like coming to a head and Brandon was taken over. And listen, whenever I had Brandon and I saw him opening day, the murder number being down, it, that's such a huge number to, when he got elected. I sat in the old Faedley's with all the mayoral candidates four years ago, talking about that number. Is the city getting better? I mean, say something good about the city for me. What do you love about it right now?
I love that my, my daughter is in Baltimore City's public schools, that when I am late to pick her up, there's a village of people who say, I have her. Meet me at the house. We'll be fine.
That's community.
I, it, it's community. It's still community everywhere. We need that. That's, that's what's good about the people, that we trust somebody, that we have a relationship with someone. What's good about the city? Another thing is that I love the fact that here in the city, that we have businesses here like this, that you can come set up shop here.
Been here 100 years. Still going.
And do your thing.
Yeah.
I mean, that doors are open and that we are ready to like work for the people, that we are ready to partner with the people. It's just that we have some things to work on and we need the right people in leadership. We don't need this thing where people are just worrying about themselves and they're not willing to work with the mayor. I say, no matter who the mayor, the mayor is, as the next city council president, I'm rolling up my sleeves and working with whoever the people Baltimore City pick. Because my priority is with the city residents and myself, what we say it is, you know? And we already know, we polled a million people. We pulled over and over again with all these different polls going out. Public safety is a top concern. Trash in our city is a top concern. You know, education is a concern. Pay to play is a concern. We know it. We can address it. And that was trash. That's low lying fruit.
Well, that changes where you do this. Yeah.
That's low, like we can hire people, but most of all, we should know it's Baltimore City. Like we want our city to be clean. And so we just want people to do the right thing. Don't throw it out your window. Don't throw it down the ground when you're walking out. We can take care of some of this. We can like do ourselves. And then when people do the big part of dumping and a lot of that stuff, we know someone got their house dumped out. We know some stuff that they dump, don't even, it doesn't even come from Baltimore City. It's, it comes from other areas. Those are issues that we can address. Those are, but those are such low lying fruit. That if we just address those and tackle those right away, we can tackle the bigger things and the bigger issues about the environment, doing things right, the Chesapeake. Those are things that we can address, but we first have to make sure that the quality of life for Baltimore City residents, that they feel protected, that they feel safe, that they're willing to stay here, that they're willing to invest here, that they're willing to send their students to school here. And I'm sending my precious jewel here. I'm, I'm stepping out.
How's your child?
She's seven.
Seven. Oh man. You're taking on this gig, seven year old. You got, you know, you're ambitious lady, Shannon Snead. Shannon Snead's here. She's running for Baltimore City Council President. Why President Snead? For you with being on the council and seeing for a number of years now, how business is conducted here, whether it's the council, whether it's the city council president, the mayor, public works, I mean, all these things that, that crime, police, our fire chief, who I saw on television at 5:30 in the morning. I was down in Florida when the bridge went down. I mean, this last month is really, and I wrote to Wes and I talked to Brandon, public services like full time, all night, three in the morning.
Yes.
Your bridge collapsed. What? I didn't even know such a thing was possible. All this has happened in the last, since I invited you on the show, last couple of weeks, you know, literally. Why city council president for you? Why do you feel like that's a spot where you can make a difference?
Because it's still dealing with policy and the things that we can change. I don't, I wouldn't be running if I thought that we had the right leadership. I wouldn't be running if we were doing everything that we had to do to make Baltimore City better. What I've seen is a lot of bickering back and forth, a lot of grandstanding, and that's not what we need. When I see.
That's what I see as a citizen on TV. And now that I live in a city, I see it as not dysfunctional, but certainly not cohesive. Not cohesive.
So when you saw them storm the second floor, when you saw at the hearing, the housing hearing, and then they stormed the second floor and no one stood up and said, not here other than councilwoman Odette Rainmose. And then they like just banging on the door at second, on the second floor. Where are you? Over a housing area? I didn't see the council president bringing, said, not here, we can't do this. And when we asked, who was this? Who encouraged you to go to the second floor? We, we know our history. We know that folks have died in city hall before. Why would you do that? That's not leadership. That totally blew my, that is chaos.
It's chaos.
When I see that we're not coming together and there's no leadership there to say, this is something that will divide us more than keep us together. We, we need that person there. We have to have that person there. And I, and I haven't seen, I haven't seen it. And that's why I say I'm running for city council president. And if people are tired of the pay to play, please go to shannonsnee, the number four baltimore.com and read more about me. Donate. The most you can donate is $150, but you can donate $5. And it absolutely is a full-time job. But when I was a council member, I was a full-time councilwoman because I didn't have another job. I could have, many of them do. But I did not because I knew that my district needed my full attention and I wanted to be there for every hearing. I wanted to make sure that I was in there in the morning, having business meetings. I wanted to make sure that in the evening, I was in my community, meeting with residents. Like those things make a difference. I wanted to make sure that I was meeting with my colleagues and having relationships with them. So they understand what bills that I was working on and bringing them into the fold. And even for the ones who did not agree on the bills that I were putting in, that we still had a relationship, that we can still talk and hammer this out and come up with a good balance. Because that's what, that's what really makes a difference. Making sure that all hands are on deck, making sure that we're having a true conversation and making sure that everyone is involved. I don't want people on my team who think exactly like me, who are just going to be yes people. I want experts in the field. I want someone that's going to be affected by the bill. I want to know all sides. And so to me, as a full-time councilwoman, I actually got to feel it, see it, live in it a little bit. And that's what we need. We need someone that's focused again on being the city council president, not looking to move up to mayor, but willing to make Baltimore City better.
What's the first thing you do if you get elected?
To make sure that the team knows that one, we're going to work together. I'm not here to hurt you. I'm not here to like stop your bills from being passed. I want to make sure that all the bills at least have a hearing. Instead of my bills got thrown in a drawer. If I made the council president mad or he didn't like that bill, it got thrown in a drawer. That's not a democratic society. I want to make sure that they know that we are all on one team. And when they thrive, when they get the bills in and when we get all the bills in, that we all look good. It's not just one person.
Do we have enough money to run the city the right way in your mind? I mean, from a tax base standpoint?
So that's why we have hearings and that's why we can ask those questions and say, is this program working? Does this make sense to put this much money into?
Well, you only have X amount of money. I mean, literally the, the money's not infinite. Right.
Listen, we all live on a fixed budget, but the, can we keep the city clean? Can we do the bare basics? Yes, we do have the money to do the bare basics. We do.
Picking up trash.
We have the bare basics to pick up trash. We have the bare basics to get our recycling. We have the bare basics to make sure our kids get to school. Absolutely. We absolutely do. Do we want more? And do we want to do more? Well, yes. Well, that's going to take us growing our population.
Well, and that needs to be more attractive and have people.
And that's what we're working on.
I didn't leave because I was afraid of anything here. I didn't leave because of the tax. I left just because the place I'm living in just had a garden.
I wish we would have found your place with a garden.
It was priced right. So we.
That's what people, I, listen, in my community is again, I was a full-time councilwoman. I did as much as I could in my district. District 13.
And that is?
Like Bella Edison, Johns Hopkins footprint of the hospital, Orangeville. We were headed a little bit right on the other side of you. So I will say Bella Edison, but yeah.
What Catholic high is? How about that?
Right. But I'm like, you see your constituents when you are meeting them when they are. I went to the supermarket in my district because I knew I would see people who would never go to community meetings in my supermarket. I went to church because I. I went to church, because I knew I would be able to see, and I would visit different churches in my community, because I knew that I would see people who I wouldn't see normally that are not coming to city hall. Sometimes some folks don't even know to call and reach out to their council members. And so I tried to like go to where I thought people were, to strike up conversations, to be relaxed, to have, what are you seeing? What are you doing? What do we need to do better? And those things made a difference. Like, oh, she was at my church. Oh, I just saw her in the supermarket, and I want you to ask me questions. I want you to stop me. And that's why I'm doing it here, because I want it to be better, but I know that it takes all of us, and it takes engaging us. And sometimes you're not going to send me an email, you're not going to send me a phone call, I'm going to go up to you and have a conversation with you and say, hey, and what else can we do?
What's the number one complaint you got as a councilperson? Was it crime? What was it?
The number one probably complaint that we got all the time was more so probably trash in our communities.
Trash, okay.
Something that was, that was the number one, that the trashmen didn't pick up.
Constituent services.
Constituent services.
Period, right?
Period. And I always knew if I was doing a good job on constituent services, when we didn't hear from the neighboring districts, if I didn't hear from District 2, or if we didn't hear from, I don't know, District 1, because those were like some of my neighboring borders, that I knew that we were doing a good job, because when we got in, like, oh my gosh, the other council districts would say, we take so many of your calls, I'm so glad that you're here. So that's how we measured it. How many calls did you get? Zero. How many calls did you get? Zero.
Measure by complaints.
Measure by complaints to know that we're on the right track.
Last thing for you, youth violence. You know, if I had Ivan Bates here, and I've had him on, I've had all of you on at one point or another, and I, this is fun for me. I've enjoyed this leading up to the election. You're one of the first conversations I've had. I'm getting into it a little bit, because I had a little respite. I did the Cup of Super Bowl. We had a football team that did pretty well, that made us, you know, that, so, but I'm tackling this over the next month. Youth violence and how to deal with it, and what to do with a 14-year-old kid that's carjacking somebody, what we do to their parents, if there is such a thing.
My thing is that I don't want it to happen at all, so that's why I say education to me is tied into public safety.
But that's not a reality for the day you take office, right?
But for me, it is, because I know that it stops. I'm not the, I am not the mayor, and I'm not running to be the mayor, and I'm not the state's attorney. So for me, that is my, that is, education is it, because I don't want your child.
That's what you can affect.
That's what I can affect, and that's what I can change. And so I do, and I've already told you, the more, the more involved parents are in their child's life or guardian's life, certain things just don't happen. Certain things won't happen.
But when they do happen, what do we do with that child, and what do we do with that family? I mean, that's really the issue for me, in saying, well, we send it back to home.
So what are you asking, because I'm not the state's attorney, and we already have those.
But what do you think should be done?
We already have, so what are you asking me? When a child commits a crime, then you have to be held accountable.
Perfect, okay.
Like, you can't go around knocking people on their head and thinking that you're going to get a slice of cake.
You're 13, and yeah, it's, yeah, it's okay.
No, 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 no.
It's not okay.
And so there are things that we can do. I want to work with your parents. I think the police officers and the state's attorneys should be having a conversation, like, right away. Listen, I don't want you to end up back here. So what do we need to prevent it? What's going on in your life? Is it bored in school? Do we need to look into other resources? Because ultimately, I want these young people to grow up into young adults, because you don't get the picture right now. Maybe at 13, you can't see yourself, at 25, you can't see yourself raising a family. But we're adults, and we know that that time will get there.